Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners Staff Meeting of January the 26th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We have a somewhat short agenda, but you never know. We have a few things on the agenda today, and I will get in it just. The MSD project update, I wanted to just say a couple of words. This is really nothing special coming before us, but what happened last year is we decided that we wanted to have a more frequent update from MSD, and they did agree to do that for the purpose of making sure that we remain connected, making sure that the public is aware of what projects are going on on a more frequent basis. So that's the purpose of this first item on the agenda. Diana Christie is here, and I'm sure she has some other people that will help with the update. I'll just ask our county administrator, Jeff Aluto, did you have anything that you'd like to add before Diana gets started?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate that. No, nothing really, just thank MSD for being here. I know these projects in particular have been the the subject of of various public hearings and public comment at times, so glad that MSD is able to provide an update on them for the board. So thank you.
Thank you. Diana, would you like to go forward with your updates?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and congratulations on your new role on the commission. I haven't been on yet in the new year, so so thank you for having us. And yes, I appreciate having this opportunity to hopefully have some dialogue, you know, starting out the year this way and continue throughout so that we can, you know, share our MSD issues. Mary Lynn Loder, Deputy Director, is going to put up a presentation, so I'll just talk while she is getting that started. And I know I have not had an opportunity to meet the newest Commissioner, Ms. Reese, so we're not doing this in person, but it's nice to somewhat meet you today. And of course, Commissioner Drehouse and I have have met previously, so so thank you all. I look forward to when we do get back in person, but we're here today. I do have a couple others. So again, Mary Lynn Loder, who's adjusting the screen. And then Ryan Welsh is also our Chief Engineer and Deputy Director, and Jack Brennan Camp, who is on our Commissioner meetings, and you all, most of you know him. And and I'm going to lead this, and they're available for questions, and as we get into discussion, and Mary Lynn's going to present some of the slides as well. So you can go to the agenda.
Let me just interject, Diana. For our Commissioners, if there's something that comes up that you'd like to ask immediately, you're certainly welcome to do that or wait till the end. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I think you'll see, you know, we are hoping for questions. I I have some, we have some slides to present that I think will help the discussion, but certainly stop me at any time. So just to open up, we were asked to provide some specific project updates, and we did put together just a nice, short, one-page update on each of the projects listed that you should have received. There are also links to web pages that we have been setting up where you can find more information, and at the end of the discussion today, we'll make sure that anyone listening in knows how to find those links. But I want to start by just saying that as we were looking at talking about a wide variety of projects, I thought, you know, maybe it was a lot to cover in one afternoon, but really, these these really all kind of do have a common thread and a common theme, and you touched on it briefly, Commissioner, but they're all projects that are addressing areas in the community where we've, where there has been a lot of community interest in solving either sewer overflow or sewer backup issues. And so, you know, I really think in order to have a discussion and answer some questions about these projects, it will be most helpful if we just do a really quick rundown of those problems and, you know, what MSD is required to do, what we've been doing, and what we're, you know, maybe looking at a little differently now. So but each of these projects, I'll just mention quickly, so we're oriented in what we have here today. The Eastside SBU study was a new project included in our capital program for 2021. So this is really not off the ground yet in terms of, you know, getting any of the work underway, but it is a planning study to look at repeated SBU sewer backup problems. It's not a tight boundary, so Eastside, somewhat Central Cincinnati SBUs are going to be evaluated and, you know, looking for solutions. The Ludlow Run Project is actually something from that we had planning done back in 2012, and it had not been included in prior work. So we have started doing some additional planning work on that and determined that we need to do more hydraulic modeling. So there is flow monitoring that will take about a year to complete on that project. This is a combined sewer overflow project, but as I mentioned, it also has a lot of community interest from the impacts impacted property owners. The Mount Washington Project is at a is in a neighborhood in Mount Washington where we have a large number of homes that had repeated sewer backups, and the traditional approach to preventing those really was not a viable option for a number of reasons. So we proposed a capital solution. This also ties into a combined sewer overflow solution as well. We hit some obstacles last year during the design, and we are reevaluating the solution. So, you know, that's kind of a in a holding pattern, if you will, but we'll update you on the work that's being done right now. And then both Muddy Creek and Rapid Run. With Muddy Creek, this is MSD applied for a FEMA grant, and we were just awarded that. And Rapid Run, Delhi Township, applied for a FEMA grant, and both of these projects will purchase, will allow us to purchase properties where there has been chronic flooding and in some cases sewer backups, you know, to eliminate those problems in the future. So if I could, we'll go to the next slide. So I'm just going to talk briefly about the overflows and the sewer backup, and I really think, as you'll see, these projects all kind of, you know, make a lot more sense and come into play when we discuss the overall situation at MSD. So this slide, you know, we've shown various schematics of our system to try to, you know, various, you know, simply illustrate what a combined sewer overflow is. And just to be clear, you know, Cincinnati and Hamilton County is not unlike a lot of other communities where we have combined sewer overflows and we have combined sewers. And these were, this is how sewers were designed. They are not malfunctioning when they have overflows. As you can see in the the image on the left, in normal conditions with light rain or steady rain, you have both sewage and stormwater getting into our public sewer, and then it is flows through another pipe to the treatment plant. When we have too much rainfall, whether it's, you know, a really intense storm in a concentrated area or widespread, we may, you know, have water coming in from various places. So this illustrates coming in on, you know, a storm drain on the street or a downspout from the building, and all, and of course, it mixes with the sewage that is in that combined sewer that's coming from the connections from, you know, properties. And once the the interceptor pipe, which is the sewer that takes it to the treatment plant, reaches its capacity, then the system is designed to overflow into creeks and streams in our area. Those overflows, as as mentioned, you know, are, we actually, there are permitted overflows by the EPA, and we monitor those, and we report out on the overflows. But we also, like many other communities, the Clean Water Act does have limitations on the amount of combined sewer overflows, and we are under a consent decree to significantly reduce the volume of overflow and to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows. And I don't want to spend too much time talking about that, but just to note where you where you have a separated system and you have both a a sanitary sewer and a stormwater sewer, you do still have instances where stormwater gets into the sanitary pipe, and those can overflow as well. And and those have to be eliminated from our system. So we just provided these statistics. These are from early on. You know, we were a decade in on our consent decree work, and and some of those volumes and things have changed, but I think you can, it illustrates the what we're talking about. It's a significant amount of of rain that enters our system and in our community. The rain we have been experiencing, as many of you know, has we've been getting more rainfall. We're a wetter community, and we also have more intense storms. So we can go to the next slide. So the consent decree, again, I want to get into all this, the details of it, but just in very basic terms, it's a, you know, court mandated, it's an agreement with the EPA, both federal and state, to provide to, you know, to meet those new conditions, and we have projects that we agreed to to reduce the overflows, and those are all outlined in what we call the Wet Weather Improvement Plan, or the WIP. So the projects, there's a lot of different types of projects and ways to solve these problems, everything from increasing the capacity of our system to allow the water to flow to our treatment plants, to upgrading our treatment plants, even building new high-rate treatment facilities, which you have approved recently, funding for some of those projects, and then green solutions where we can control the stormwater and keep it out of the combined system. So there's a lot of different methods that we can use to address our combined sewer overflow problems, and those are all outlined in the WIP. One of the things about our project, our consent decree that's unique is that it's phased, so we talk about the various phases a lot, and that's just where we commit to the schedule of projects based on what our community can afford and can't afford. But before I go on to the next slide, I think I just, it's also important to to explain what our consent decree and what the WIP doesn't do. It doesn't require us to completely separate all sewers. So again, we have combined sewers. We are still going to have combined sewers when all of this work is completed. It also doesn't guarantee that we will never have a sewer backup again. And if to anyone who has experienced it, you know, a sewer backup is a really big problem, and is very costly, and can be, you know, really damaging to to individuals and and properties. So the consent decree, though, did set up a sewer backup program, and we can go to the next slide. So we are required to respond to and address sewer backups, but we didn't, we are not required, or the WIP didn't include projects to completely or holistically look at the sewer backup problem and solve it until after they happen. And Mary Lynn's going to talk more about why that's a big problem and why it's very expensive. But just just to be clear, what we are required to do in the program that we've been implementing is that anyone who has water in their basement, you know, it's expected to call or report. We try to make sure everyone has those numbers and that website. You can report any time of day or night, and MSD will be out and investigate the problem and investigate what happened to your property. So if a property is determined to be eligible under our sewer backup program, then MSD will provide cleaning services, and if any damages occurred, then we will, we have a claims program, and you submit a claim for reimbursement, and we will pay for those damages. The other component of the sewer backup program, again, all of this is in the consent decree, is the prevention of recurring backups. And the prevention program is also, you know, where these projects, a lot of these projects come into play, and what Mary Lynn's going to get into a little bit of the cost component of the prevention program is for properties that have already had two or more backups in five years. So it's not a proactive prevention of sewer backups. You've already had one and had damages, MSD's already spent money, and then we, you know, look at a prevention solution. So I think that the next thing I wanted to cover quickly is just explaining how we determine whether a property is eligible for our sewer backup program. Yeah, this slide, thank you. And and this is a schematic that, you know, hopes to illustrate what is happening in, I think, the typical capacity-related SBU. So what it's showing there is that, I think unfortunately, it looks like a sunny day, so I'll have to work on that image, at least to me, it looks like blue skies. But what you see there is our combined sewer, so again, our sewer that's taking sewage from the homes that are connected to it, and it's taking stormwater from both, you know, downspouts and the street, becomes full and reaches capacity. And what happens then is that water, of course, will travel to the path of least resistance and by gravity, really, to anywhere where it can find space to go. And unfortunately, that can be in someone's basement and even, you know, first floors of their homes. So this is an illustration of a capacity-related SBU. And I think it's also important to keep in mind, in this scenario, this is really a result of the design of a combined sewer system. So there's nothing that MSD has failed to do in terms of maintenance of its sewer system. So it's really just all about more water than can fit in our pipes, and therefore the water, you know, mixed with sewage needs to find somewhere to go. If we can go to the next slide, then this illustrates properties that may have a sewer backup that we determine is not covered by our program. So again, we don't expect homeowners to know. If you have water in your basement that appears to be coming up from the drains, please call us. We will send someone out. We get out there, you know, within hours, and we will investigate and determine what is taking place. A lot of times, in fact, it's probably over, it's definitely over 50%, over 75%, I believe. What we find is that it is not due to a capacity-related problem, like I just explained, but oftentimes it is a private building sewer blockage. So that can be a clog in your private building sewer, you know, from things that you put on the drain, or it can be from tree roots or other damage to your building sewer. So in this case, if we were to investigate and determine that there was a blockage in the private sewer and not in the MSD sewer, then we would refer the homeowner to a plumber. And then, so there's one more illustration of what is not covered by our program. And this is, so what you see here is that presumably the combined sewer on the left has flow in it, but it has not reached capacity, and so we can determine that the that the sewer is open and running, but water came into your home from stormwater, you know, whether it's running down your foundation or, you know, coming in, sometimes we have recessed driveways where it comes in, but it's coming into your home, and it's really what we call overland flooding. Overland flooding alone is not something that is eligible for coverage under the sewer backup program. I want to be clear, though, that what happens a lot of the time is that people experience flooding from both the combined sewer and overland flooding, and so don't have a schematic of that, but, you know, it could be that both the sewer is at capacity and you're getting water in from other sources. And in those cases, it has been determined that MSD, that you would be eligible for cleaning and claims reimbursement under the sewer backup program. This has been a source of a lot of confusion and frustration, quite honestly, by property owners, and in large part, that's because either the flooding is almost entirely overland flooding, or it's all overland flooding, and MSD cannot do anything to solve that problem. So where we'll talk about the sewer backup prevention program, you know, if the real problem is that water is coming through recessed driveways from, you know, in stormwater or it's coming down the hill, that's a stormwater issue, and MSD is a sanitary sewer district. Our use of our rates is restricted. We are, as you know, by statute, which is the Ohio Revised Code, it specifies exactly what we can spend our our ratepayer dollars on. And so we can't, in this instance, do something to stop that water from coming in the home because it's not part of our sewer system. So I think, you know, we've been focused on, of course, really trying to be more proactive and look for better and more efficient solutions to the sewer backup program, and also looking at how our approach to the combined sewer overflow problem also can help or be paired together with some of these solutions. So again, Mary Lynn's going to just start talking more about the existing costs of the SBU program and then get into the projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana, and thank you, Commissioners, for for having us here. And again, the reason why we want to focus on the SBU program is each of the projects, at least most of them, really are, you know, kind of right in the the thick of being, you know, within SBU area, right? So they are, they are focused on on potentially a whip requirement, but also, we've had a lot of SBUs in these areas. And and so just wanted to kind of lay some groundwork and give you some background about the SBU program, how much money it's really costed the district and what those costs have gone for, and then ultimately want to kind of lay out a path for where we're going now, I think, with this information and certainly with with your support through the the passage of the 2021 budget and whatnot. So just want to try to help level set for you because we really think this is a good place that we're at to start really developing some great solutions, awful problems. So again, you know, we have historically been implementing the SBU program as it is outlined in the consent decree. Depending on rainfall, MSD can spend anywhere from 3.8 to 19 million dollars in a calendar year specifically just for SBUs. And and again, as Diana said and kind of alluded to, we are really more reactive. The consent decree has laid out a very reactive sewer backup program for us to to implement, meaning that we only do prevention and prevention devices after someone has already experienced a sewer backup two times in five years. So that really puts us behind the eight ball as it relates to trying to solve these problems and, you know, more importantly, puts our ratepayers through, you know, some pretty trying situations before we can even start talking about prevention. Over the last 16 years since we've been implementing it, we've spent about 130 million dollars on the SBU program. That includes investigations, cleaning properties impacted by SBUs, paying as well as installing the backup prevention devices. Of that 130 million dollars, about 60% or 78 million dollars is spent on cleaning investigations and damages. So again, that's a lot of money we're spending reacting after, you know, the bad has already happened, you know? So and then also in the last 16 years, we investigate every sewer backup that occurs. You know, the our customers know what a number to call, they call, we get a crew out there, we investigate it, we determine what the cause is, as Diana said, is it in the public sewer where we don't have a capacity? And if so, that's generally is about 15% of the time that it's really something that is covered by MSD's program. The rest, about 85% of them are are due to building lateral failures or blockages in the stormwater pipe or overland flooding situations. And so so what we're doing now, I mean, we we think collectively recognize that the the status quo is really not a viable approach. We've been considering ways to reshape the SBU program, and in 2021, I think we're really poised to be able to deliver on laying out some some new new pathways to go. And it really, you know, when you think about the 130 million dollars that we've we've spent on the consent decree required SBU program and implementing it as it is required of us, you spend 130 million dollars. And in terms of the prevention, we've only been able to install because of a number of different factors, but primarily because of people having two SBUs within five years that makes them eligible to have a prevention device. We've only installed 0.01% of those of we've installed SBU devices on 0.01% of our all of our accounts. So and it's less than like 1,200 of our ratepayers have the prevention devices. Some people don't want them. You know, some are complicated because it's other factors, you know, such as it's not really an MSD problem. And so this creates a very frustrating situation for everybody. And so we have explored and in 2021, we'll be developing more proactive solutions on this, and I want to kind of lay the groundwork for what that is. And it really, it's impacting all of these different projects that we, you know, we're talking about today. So the path forward that we want to take on our SBU program is really focusing on what the data is telling us, and we use this map in our budget presentation in in December. So you might recognize it from that. What this with this map shows is just since 2017 to 2021, we've been collecting data on all of our investigations that we do do and are able to kind of, you know, have more information in which that we can see what we're dealing with. And what we know based on just the last three years of SBUs is we know where we have areas of repetitive SBUs. We also know what is the capacity-related storm that that occurred in certain areas to know whether it's a bigger issue when we have less rainfall versus a really big storm. You know, it's no surprise that when we have a really big storm, we have more SBUs, but no utility has pipes to convey, you know, a 50-year storm or 100-year storm. We're really concerned about those storms that might just be like a two- or three- or four-year storm. If people are having SBUs then, that's a real capacity-related problem and things that we're trying to identify those areas, and that's what mapping all of this has really helped us do in the last six months. So what this this map is showing, again, the the red dots, the greater the red dot, the the less less significant of a storm that is, meaning that if it's a bigger dot, it's a bigger problem from a capacity-related situation. The green dots that are on the map there show where we've actually installed prevention devices. So we want to use this kind of data to help guide us in terms of what is the best solution in certain areas. And in 2021, we're developing more of a multi-pronged approach as opposed to just, you know, relying on the the current reactive approach that's laid out in the consent decree of installing devices after two events in five years. We really want to take a longer-term view to reshape the effectiveness of of our efforts on SBU and ultimately align project selection or operational controls in some cases to proactively address SBU. And so that's, again, what the Eastside Study is, is we are looking at the data to help us really define what is going to be further evaluated and analyzed and ultimately, you know, potentially some solutions coming forward in the in the Eastside Study that we're doing. We're also this year considering sewer lateral insurance options. So if you remember, you know, our, when we do our investigations, about 15% of of those SBUs are on our side of of the equation, if you will, you know, for us to try to, you know, bring forward a solution on that. But the other 85% of the time, it's a private property issue, or could be. And so a sewer lateral insurance could be an option for some of our ratepayers to to have a sewer lateral insurance to be able to help them deal with some of the costs, and we're looking at that kind of globally and will most likely, and, you know, I would say, you know, by mid-year have a recommendation potentially to to bring forward to the to the board. And so I just want to dig in a little bit more about, you know, the first point here. Focus. the first point here, focus on what the data tells us. And so we have looked, again, kind of looked at all of, you know, really zoomed in on these areas in the last several months to identify the SBU boundary condition, you know? Previously, we're, you know, really just been looking at, okay, you know, this homeowner over here, if they've had two or more SBUs in five years, okay, now we're going to get them on the process to get a device. And what these three cutouts here show just three of the many areas that we have where we have SBU problems. The green dots are showing where we have already installed SBU protection devices. The yellow dots show where we actually have them in either design or construction. And then the red dots are where there has been at least one SBU. And so what we're doing is looking at all of the situations we have, the data we have, we're looking at the model, looking at kind of some other factors in the real world to try to identify what is the boundary condition around some of these areas. And if we keep on doing SBUs, protection devices in some cases, that might just create another problem downstream, you know, or to the neighbor or whatnot. So we're really trying to look at and identify these, all of the areas that we have of repetitive SBUs and characterize them and categorize them to identify what is the best solution to address that. And so some of those, what were, these are kind of the categories that we're going to be putting them into, identifying whether there may be an operational control that would not result in a negative impact to someone else, but we could potentially utilize an operational control to either slow down how much water is actually getting into our system, which then, right now, could be backing up in somebody's basement. We want to potentially, in some cases, might want to investigate where we have some road surface or land surface to be able to allow water to pond as long as it doesn't create that negative impact. So again, those are analysis that we have to do. But in some areas, those operational controls may be beneficial. It's better than backing up in people's basements. We're also looking at regional solutions. Like, for example, this one here is one that we've had some SBUs. We have some protection, but it really seems like there might be something more that needs to be analyzed for a regional solution here rather than us just putting in devices all in, you know, some of these areas and then these folks start getting back up. So we're trying to look at those in certain areas like that and funnel them into, again, like a regional solution. And they might, you know, if they're on the east side, if they are, you know, within that kind of, those kind of conditions fit good, they meet certain criteria, that will be something that the East Side study will take advantage of this information. Then this one over here is showing that since we have already installed so many devices, it could be that maybe we just want to proactively offer an incentive for this property owner to do, to have an installation of a sewer backup prevention device there. And then, of course, we're looking at, you know, in some cases, land acquisition. The FEMA grants that we've been able to partner with and secure have been very helpful in some areas. And the last slide I think that I have is this one.
Mary Lynn?
Yes?
Can you go back to that slide? So the map on the left, no, right there, yeah. The map on the left, what area is that?
This one here?
Oh, go forward, this one, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The left where all that.
Yeah, okay, so these, I just went through, we have, we have literally, I hate to say that we have a lot of these areas, okay? We have hundreds of these areas. So these are all over, this is not just, we have literally about 400 of these areas mapped right now. They're all over the place. Essentially, like if you look at this map here, we have these kinds of data and information for everywhere that we have a lot of repetitive SBUs. I just put these up as examples. In the next few months, we will be categorizing all of those that we have.
Okay, because I heard you say earlier about the East Side survey. So I'm just assuming that there have been a lot of occurrences in the east side. That's why you decided to do a survey on that side?
Yes, and actually, this map here shows all of our SBUs from 2014 to 15. And so generally, the east side is going to be kind of in this area. And you can see that there is a greater concentration there. And that's not to say that, you know, the East Side study is the end of it. I really think about this as the East Side study is the beginning.
Beginning.
What we're trying to do is categorize all of these things. Some of them might be better to do an operational control or proactive installation of prevention. But we are using essentially all of the available and more recent data that we have to help refine what the East Side study needs to be. And it is flexible, so.
Okay, thanks.
If I could just chime in real quick. We may have said this during the budget hearing, but, you know, while it may seem simple in a sense, you know, looking at these dots on the homes, until very recently, we didn't have, we didn't have the data in a way that we could use it. So, you know, so by, some of our really great folks in our IT division and working with CAGES have taken what we have in our SBU database of, you know, we know the addresses and we know that they've occurred and when they've occurred, but we weren't mapping it and then layering in the rain data to know when, you know, what was happening when they had those backups. And looking at it through this lens is really informative. And we did not have this until last year. So we weren't able to really, you know, all of a sudden, it's like it comes, you know, to life in a sense. And you can see it and you can do something with it. And we weren't, we didn't have it mapped. So it makes a big difference to have that data.
And also, in the earlier years too, it's really just, since 2017, we've been categorizing some of the storm-related data with the actual SBU too. So really, again, trying to really refine what we're collecting, how we're collecting it, and then also how are we using it, you know? And so, so yeah, before I move on to the FEMA grant, is there any other questions you'd like to ask on just now looking at some of the data?
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. So thanks for the presentation, both Mary Lynn and Diana. I am interested in this approach. I think it's a good idea to take a look at this, especially if it will impact costs and make the expenses go down. Couple of questions related to kind of the broad picture. For many years, we've talked about having what I call green solutions or solutions that keep the water out of the system to begin with. So when I look at the list in the yellow box there, is that incorporated here somewhere so that we can take a real look at green solutions as opposed to the gray build solutions? I'm assuming that's in here somewhere.
Yeah, it is, absolutely. It's really, it could be in any of these. In particular, though, I would say it's going to be in your regional solution. So again, that's going to be something where we're going to dig in to identify what is the best solution here. In some cases, it might be offloading stormwater and creating more of a, you know, a water quality feature to hold back and retain that water before it blends back in. So a green solution could be within the regional solution, but then also under land acquisition, you know? That is a green solution to create a, you know, either a conveyance or a storage area for stormwater. Could also be an operational control, though, too. I mean, depending on what, to be able to utilize. But generally, it's going to be, I think, in that regional solution.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that we do have that overlay, which has been a policy direction for, I don't know how long, to make sure that we are looking at green solutions in addition to, you know, all this, the other solutions regarding pipes and, you know, some of the other stuff you talked about. And Madam President, I have one other question. I'm happy to hold for a minute if you'd like, or I'll go ahead and ask my next question.
If it's related to this part, you can move forward.
It is, indeed. So I am also wondering, as you look through this strategy and try to rethink the SBU program, how involved so far has the county team been with this? And what is to be anticipated? Before we get to, I guess, I'm thinking before we get too far down the road, I don't know if those conversations have already taken place or what the expectation is.
Well, I think, and Diana can, but I think that, you know, this was all part of our budget discussion with the county that we would be moving in this direction to kind of look at things differently. And as we have information, we can, you know, report back in terms of either this setting or with county team to keep them in the loop of what we're finding.
Yeah, I think, I did, I do remember it being in the budget. And again, I think it's a great approach. I think it's forward-thinking, and I like that. I just want to make sure that the county team is in the loop as we progress so that we don't have to do any backtracking by way of providing information or, you know, approaches here because that didn't happen on the front end. Because I think that has been happening as of late, and I'm encouraged by that. And I'm just hopeful that that continues related to how we might want to revamp the SBU program.
Yeah, and I would just want to add too that, you know, we're early in this process. We're still getting all of this data kind of sorted and categorized. And, but I think we've got a great, a great team that's working on this and we're happy to share that information. And I think it does make sense. And I think the, you know, it will continue to shape up and I don't think we have a problem with sharing.
Yeah, and I think just two things I would like to add there, I guess. Generally speaking, you know, a lot of this is new. And so there hasn't been a lot of, you know, really work done recently to really show what we can do with this information. Certainly, as we continue to explore it, we will work closely and make sure that, you know, those discussions are taking place. But I wanted to also comment on the green solution. So like, just for example, one of the projects, the Mount Washington project that we've been talking about recently, that's an area where it's not illustrated here, but those homes where we had, you know, repeated backups, 40-plus homes in the neighborhood, you know, we were evaluating, you know, potential solutions. And one of them was, they were really, you know, different variations of taking the stormwater out of the system altogether, combined system, you know, finding some space where we could either have detention above ground or underground or some kind of curb bump outs in what we would consider green solutions versus the direction we started to go in, which is constructing a storm sewer underneath the roadway in the right of way to provide storage of the stormwater and allow it to, you know, not get into my sewer until the capacity was available again. And that is one where we really worked with the community and got their feedback. The infrastructure, the traditional approach, I guess, was not only more cost-effective, but it was preferred by the community. So there's, you know, we, the county was involved in that. And unfortunately, as we mentioned, that project is, because of the utility conflicts, the significant utility conflicts, we're reevaluating that storm sewer installation and the connection to the combined sewer and trying to find a better alternative. But it was interesting. I mean, you know, the green solution really wasn't the cost-effective solution there. And it was not preferred by the community. So you just don't know until you go in and you look at the, you know, the topography and, you know, that's an area where there isn't a lot of space. So you'd be acquiring, you know, you'd be acquiring homes and, you know, things like that and changing the, you know, the look of the area. So it really depends. Sometimes the green solution is the cost-effective solution, and sometimes it's not. But we are evaluating those, you know, as Mary Lynn said, when we're looking at those solutions.
And I would just add too that, again, the Mount Washington solution, the WHIP project is actually a very gray, you know, a facility at the end of that and not to change any of the stormwater, get any of the stormwater out. We could potentially incorporate the green in terms of how that stormwater connects back to the environment in terms of restoring the creek that that water is going to be returned to. So, you know, the green, green might just have a bit of a different place in a project than just like, you know, right in where you might be thinking. And, you know, I mean, we also use a lot of gray with green, you know? It's not necessarily all green. We can't, all green isn't going to fix everything, but if we can identify how it fits into the overall landscape and topography and stuff, we could still get some enhanced green infrastructure even in, you know, Mount Washington with some of the restoration of the creek.
Anything else, Commissioner Drehouse?
No, I just, yeah, I just wanted to, just once again emphasize that we have, as a board, have really wanted to try to work to achieve green solutions. I understand that's not always possible and nor is that always efficient. But that's not to say that we shouldn't at least contemplate that as we move forward, especially as we're revamping a whole program here. So I just wanted to remind and emphasize that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'd like to be on record also, as it relates to that green solution, I hear you saying that it may not be the most cost prohibitive, but if there's any way we can do that or combine it, as Mary Lynn and Diana were saying. But I'm also an advocate for the green solution. Vice President Reese, did you have any comments as we, to this, this section here?
Yes, I do. I don't know if you can hear me. I'm in my office, we're still dealing with this. I don't know what's going on with the internet. So you can't, I don't know if you can see me, hopefully you can hear me.
I can hear you. It looks like it's two names on there, though, but I don't know why that is.
I have no idea. I'm praying we can get this resolved because this has been a problem for three weeks now. I just want to join in on one thing. I agree with both Commissioner Drehouse and President Dumas on the green solutions. And I think bringing it back so that we can see that it was looked at and we were able to see what the cost analysis is would give us a better, I think, for me, it would help me be able to see that we looked at this and it was, you know, not available or it was not cost-effective, but it was effective, but at least the people and ourselves could see that we looked at that. So I think it should be included as an item in, as we go into a new program, that that is something to be looked at as a viable option. I think the other piece, I would also agree, including the county on the front end so that we don't have two different messages. And that's something we're trying to, you know, avoid as we are moving forward. It's better to be on the front end than to try to come in on the back end of a plan. But I do want to ask if you could go over again the Muddy Creek land acquisition component. Obviously, that's something that's been out there, been in the news. I've heard from a lot of folks. Can you maybe go over that one more time to get a, it's a better understanding of that? Because that could be something very positive. I look at it as something very positive.
Yep, and that's actually my next slide. So if we move on to that, I can certainly do that.
Well, Mary Lynn, since we're asking questions now, I just wanted to make sure from Bridget that there's no one on the line that wanted to comment because I don't want them to have to go through the next FEMA grant part. They had questions as it relates to this.
Thanks, Madam President. I don't see any questions on the other side.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right, Mary Lynn.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, yeah, okay. So the next, the next thing, and really, this kind of relates to, you know, kind of categorizing all of our SBU areas into a potential, you know, category for land acquisition. And Muddy Creek FEMA grant is a perfect example of that. So this is exciting news, you know? Everybody should be really excited. And the fact that we actually were approved on Friday by, we got a word from Ohio Emergency Management Agency that FEMA officially has approved the Muddy Creek, Muddy Creek Road flood mitigation project. At the, the total project cost is $4.5 million. That is a $4 million grant specifically for acquisition of properties voluntarily. You know, voluntarily meaning that nobody's going to be forced to sell. And we've been in touch with all of the properties that expressed. And we've been in touch with all of the properties that expressed, or that we were originally considering. Each of the properties that are included in the $4.5 million project, each of them voluntarily agreed that they want to participate. They could still decide that they don't want to up until, you know, even getting an offer and then just saying no. But in order to have the grant submitted and, and accepted, we actually needed to have them sign off and say that they wanted to participate in this. So the FEMA grant is, is something that we bought back in 2019, and, you know, again, the reason for that is because this is Muddy Creek Road, and Muddy Creek Road used to be Muddy Creek. Muddy Creek actually starts down here at the end of, at the corner of like Muddy Creek and Westbourne, and then it just kind of disappears, but it doesn't really disappear. It goes into this pipe that was installed in like the 1950s. Muddy Creek Road was, was constructed, the creek was put into a pipe, and then homes were built along it. And the topography in some areas is, you know, slopes quite a bit, and some of the driveways are recessed. And even though many of these, many of these homes already have sewer backup prevention installed on them, they continue to have impacts from the fact that our sewer is at capacity, the manholes are overflowing with sewage, that sewer sewage mixes with stormwater, and then gets into their house through their, you know, basement windows or recessed driveways, and, you know, causes lots of problems. So even though we have spent lots of money installing sewer backup devices in many of these homes, the problem is, is still there. So this is just an example of an area that we, we might want to do something like a green approach or do a grant like, like this. And so this illustration that I have here is, in order for us to be, to actually get the grant to apply for, we had to do a flood hazard study. We had to delineate this area, because typically the FEMA grants are for FEMA-defined floodplain. And this is not a FEMA-defined floodplain. We actually had to do the, the work to identify what the floodplain area would be if, if there was a stream here. There is a stream here. We had to kind of create all of that analysis and get that submitted to FEMA, and FEMA accepted it, which is pretty, pretty significant. It's not, it's not something that's done quickly or easily. Within this area, this is just, I think, from 2013, from three print years through 2013, 15 and 17, we had MSD paid out just over a half a million dollars in damage claims in this area. So, you know, that helped to get the grant, the fact that, you know, this is just a repetitive damage area. And so that's not necessarily, that, so that, and those are from the, the properties that are identified in blue here. And then the, the ones that we actually have in the grant are really these concentrated areas here. And this just illustrates, really, the, the concentrated areas that we focused on. This is like the 300, or I'm sorry, the 3,500 block, and this is like the 5,500 block. Any property owner that was interested, we had a series of meetings in October of 2019, then we, you know, met individually with, with people to, you know, get their, get their interest forms back. And so 35 of them wound up agreeing that they wanted to be participating in the program. And, and so we submitted it, and, and it's been a long time, but finally FEMA did give the approval on Friday. We're going to be hosting a meeting on March 3rd for the property owners. It'll be a virtual meeting, but just to try to share with them, you know, what the plan is, the process. In the next month, we have to complete a grant agreement with Ohio Emergency Management Agency, and we have to do that before we can really do anything else. We're also working on getting other right-of-way assistance under contract so that we can, you know, be able to have, you know, timely and efficient closings and be able to disperse the payments that need to be dispersed and all that stuff. So we're, we're getting everything ready, so that hopefully by March 3rd, we'll be able to lay out a good schedule and plan for the property owners and, you know, to help, help them just get through this process, because it will be a lot to go through. But, you know, and again, this is something that through this analysis and the data evaluation that we're doing for the whole district, we, you know, might actually see and identify some more opportunities to go after additional grants like this. So that's all I had. Diana, do you want to, go ahead.
Mary Lynn, the 35 residents, is that 100% of the residents? I thought there were a couple that didn't want.
It is, it's not 100% of the residents. Originally, I think that, again, by working with OEMA, they were able to identify more money for us, you know, because essentially they have, they had FEMA dollars that only could be spent on hazard mitigation grants, and so fortunately, there just wasn't, for that particular round, there wasn't, there was some excess state money, so we were able to add some more properties to that. Originally, it might have been only like 20 or 25. So we were able to add some more. We did include everybody who wanted it at the time this deadline was submitted. And then we decided to go after another ones, because we knew that there were still some other properties out there that did not sign in yet. We were able to get five more of them to participate. So that grant hasn't been awarded yet, but it is in process. But still, there'll be more remaining, and, you know, we can't force them to do it. It's, it's up to them to decide they want to participate.
Okay.
But we did reach out, we focused really in these yellow box areas, because again, that's where we had more of our damage claims that we were paying out. And now that we have this mapped, you know, we'll just continue to try to identify other areas like this where we might have to do some of this mapping ourselves. Again, we're, we're paying a lot in damages. We might want to go in that direction.
I just got a note that Karen Ball has her hand raised, so we'll get to her in a minute. Go ahead.
I wasn't sure if Mary Lynn had stated that as part of the grant and the conditions, you know, obviously there will be a restriction, this property will not be able to be developed, you know, for residential or any use. And so kind of the, the final phase is really, you know, MSD, you know, utilizing and evaluating the property for some benefits to our system, you know, so once you demolish the homes and you put in green space, do we need some swales or other drainage? So that's, you know, kind of the final phase of this, and it really ties it all back together to those, to those green solutions.
Yes, thank you, Diana. Yeah, I mean, this is a perfect example of, you know, we're really trying to maximize the, the natural drainage. And really, that's a requirement of the grant that it really has to provide some passive stormwater use.
Well, that's, that's absolutely awesome that we were able to qualify for the grant. You guys were able to write it in such a way and prove it in such a way that they agreed. So that, so that's a great thing for the county and for MSD, so. Karen would like to say a couple words, if we could hook her in.
Hi, I, I just have one question. Mary Lynn or Diana, do you know if, back in 2019 when we submitted the grant, the state had committed a 12 and a half percent towards the local match? Is that still in play, or do you know?
Yes. So the, the $4 million that we got is from both the state and the, the federal grant. So MSD is responsible for 12.5% of the total project cost. And so that's approximately the $570,000 that we have to pay well, in order to get the, the $4 million grant. So 12% of that is coming from state, and then 75% is coming from the, from FEMA, and 12.5% comes from MSD ratepayer dollars.
Right. Thank you.
And we included that in the, the 2020, the 2020 CIP as well as the 2021 CIP. So the match is already identified in the Capital Improvement Project.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I weigh in? Just, I, I just want to say that, hurrah, hurrah. These people have been waiting for a really long time for some relief, and again, congratulations on the partnership with the state and the feds in particular to get this money together. This is a very, very expensive resolution of a situation down on Muddy Creek. But I'm sure the folks that live there are delighted to know that there's an end in sight here, because I know this has been going on for many years. So congratulations on that. Yeah, it's, it's great. And I'm, and I am also anxious, you know, I, could you put it in context for us? As far as what, when was the, I don't remember us getting a FEMA grant for something similar to this, especially in this size. When was the last time we went for and got a FEMA grant?
MSD actually applied for one itself back in 2012, and then we, I think we were awarded in 13 and implemented in 14 and 15. That was in Northside along West Fork Road, so if you remember, you know, back then, there used to be a number of homes right along West Fork Road. And we acquired them because, again, we had some SBUs in that area as well as some future work in the channel. That, that's something that MSD did alone, and I think that one was almost $3 million. I think it was like 2.7 million. And then also, as Diana said, we do have a partnership with Delhi Township. We're in the process of implementing the third phase of the Delhi Township FEMA Grant, which is, is comparable to really this one as well as Mount Washington in that there is an enhanced high-rate treatment facility that's in the Wet Weather Improvement Plan. And we did, early in probably 2011 or 12, we did an evaluation to potentially not do a, the WIP project there, which is a very gray solution, instead of doing a green, more sustainable solution in Delhi Township that would utilize some of that FEMA-acquired property for stormwater conveyance. So, you know, these things do take a lot of time, but it's like, it is all kind of coming together somewhat with regard to being able to really implement some alternative, cost-effective, sustainable solutions.
Yeah, and all that precedes all of us, except for you, Mary Lynn. So appreciate the perspective on that.
And Jack, and, and Karen.
And Karen. So that was one of the projects I mentioned in the, in the intro, the rapid run. But there, Delhi Township was the applicant, has been the applicant, and, but MSD does provide a match, and we've been partnering with them on the work.
Thank you. I, I can weigh in a little bit more on that. The, the reasons that Delhi was the official applicant was because the program that FEMA had at the time required the local community to be the applicant. They weren't necessarily open to accepting these types of requests from public entities, which has changed since then, so that's allowing us now to do it ourselves. But Delhi will turn those properties over to MSD ownership, so they will belong to MSD once they're acquired. That's part of the intergovernmental agreement that we have with Delhi. The funds are coming from the MSD resources, and ultimately, they've been successful on the first two phases, and I'm sure Diana and Mary Lynn will fill you in on that. But I just wanted to give that clarity. The, the program didn't allow MSD to apply directly back then. And that was around 2003 we started that.
Wow, thank you.
Okay, well, that, that's all I had.
Yes, and so I'll just bring it back to the beginning, if I could, just to, you know, share again with you that, you know, we know that, that you had asked for specific project updates, and we don't want to, you know, not talk about those, but they really, some, some of these projects, you know, aren't really in a stage where there is much of an update. So we provided those drafts to you, just the one-page sheets. And I didn't really want to, you know, read through those. I'd rather just open it up for your questions, unless you want me to go over them all in, in any detail, but.
Thank you, Diane. I think the summaries are good. We can take from those what's going on, and of course, you will be back. All of you guys will be back, and we can discuss in further depth if we'd like to. But I'd like to open it up to Vice President Reese, if you had any questions.
Thank, thank you, Madam President, and I probably have a lot of questions. You know, as I'm still digesting all of this. But one of the things on, under the communication side, in terms of your report that you gave us, the one sheeters, you talk about groups that you had reached out individually on these projects, Sierra Club, Mill Creek Alliance, and Communities United for Action. And some of them are saying they're monitoring and tracking the projects. Could you maybe talk about that? Certainly, I've gotten calls to, because I'm going to be meeting with different groups. I wanted to make sure I had a clear understanding. But this one was in regards to the Ludlow Run project. And then I think there were listed on one other. So can you talk about that when you talk about communications with these groups? And what are, you said you're waiting to hear back on tracking, or they're waiting to hear on tracking?
Okay, sure. Yes, let me just clarify. So in particular, the Ludlow Run project, there were those specific community groups that, you know, have been, I know they're in touch with MSD, they're likely in touch with commissioners, and really seeking answers and updates on this project. What MSD has done, which, quite honestly, we, we didn't do this in the past, we've set up webpages that we will keep updated, just kind of to always have that landing space and, you know, contact information. So, and those can be found at MSDGC.org/projects, and then you can, you know, they're just by name. So Ludlow Run in particular, you know, this update, the status of the, the work that's underway, past studies are all available linked on that page. What, in particular, you know, that, that, with the communications, you know, I think we just wanted to share with you all that we're, we're aware that there are, you know, a lot of community groups expressing interest and wanting updates. And, you know, MSD has a project team and a communications team, you know, that will send out letters, coordinate community meetings at appropriate times. The status of this particular project right now, though, is one that really is, it's in a holding pattern while we collect more data. So we do hydraulic, we do flow monitoring to really get an updated understanding of what the problems are and what we need to solve. So our consent decree has milestones for the overflows and, you know, what were we, what we need to achieve. Because this project hasn't been looked at in almost 10 years, we're doing updates to that, and it's really, it's about a year-long effort. So I, the community understandably wants a solution, but it, that, you know, we're really in that, in that time where there isn't much of an update to provide. So we will continue to share any updates we have on that webpage. But at this time, there isn't, you know, there isn't anything new to share. And then I think, so let me just look quickly, the other ones. With the Mount Washington neighborhood, that one, we have a, you know, a list of the residents that live on these three streets that have been impacted. And we have recently set out a letter just advising them of the status of the project that was in design, that is currently, you know, undergoing some additional engineering evaluation and modeling also with the hydraulic model. And so it's not a special community group, it's just those particular residents that we try to keep informed. But again, we have a, we have now set aside, you know, webpage where we like to direct people to, because then hopefully, anything that's new, we'll put it there, and they can always find the right contact information. And, you know, the, the grants, again, that's a more specific set of individuals who would receive those updates that, so we have set mailing lists. The East Side Study is a little more difficult, and I think we were just commenting there that we, we've been getting a lot of inquiries from community members and residents. And at this time, you know, we, we are setting up a website, and we'll start providing information there. But because it's such an expansive boundary, really, until that- until that study starts resulting in recommendations for, you know, for projects or certain, you know, solutions, you know, it's hard to pinpoint who is going to be interested in what. So I think that our communications team, you know, will do their best to keep that website up to date. And then through these meetings, perhaps we can share timely updates.
Thank you.
Okay, and also, COOFA was very instrumental in pushing forward the timeline for reporting SBU backups. And so we worked, the county worked with the city of Cincinnati to agree to change it from 24 hours. We did a little bit more than, we had to sign off on it, from 24 hours to report any backup to 72 hours. So they were very instrumental in pushing that agenda forward, and I'm happy that they did. So at this time, Bridget, do you see anybody else on there as it relates to this item? Any residents?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. All right, with nothing else being said or no additional questions, I want to thank all of you for coming and we'll see you very soon, okay?
Thank you very much.
Unless you want to stay on, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you.
Yeah. I wanted to digress just a little bit before we go to our second item. And I'm looking for Leslie Harvey, if you can show your face. Thank you. And no, that is not Jackie Paniotto. I just wanted to let people know, people were wondering. That is Leslie Harvey, who is the assistant to Jackie Paniotto. And I thank you for filling in for her, Leslie.
Thank you.
Uh huh, you're welcome. So item number two is JFS, some agreements overview that our director, Tim McCartney, is going to talk about. And he had Michael Patton is also here with you. So you go on, Tim, we're ready for you.
Oh, well, thank you, Madam President, Commissioners. We appreciate you having us here. Also, along with Michael, Laura Wolf, who you all know, also on the call. And then our contract manager, Lisa Wilworth, is also with us. I'll give you a little bit of overview of the contracts. And then Michael will talk about them specifically. And Lisa will go through how we come about the costs. So bottom line is, the reason we're here today is, you know, I've been around a long time. And one of the things that I'm acutely aware of is that JFS sometimes has some anomalies or things that are just a little bit different about some of the things that we may bring before the board because of our federal funding, because of the programs we administer. And 4D contracts are one of those sort of anomalies that we'll talk about today. And basically, 4D contracts are something that in Ohio Administrative Code gives JFS the opportunity to contract with various governmental entities to help them administer the child support program. We may have contracts with, you know, juvenile and domestic relations court, prosecutor, sheriff, clerk of courts, reporter's office, treasurer's office, all those sorts of things. In fact, if the courts or law enforcement decline to have a contract with us, we would have to document that and share that with our state office and keep that record that we attempted to do that with our, our local offices, but they were not interested. That generally doesn't happen. The contracts are basically cost reimbursement contracts. And the good thing for you is they're funded at 66% federal dollars. And then JFS, through our state matching things, funds the rest. In some counties, that's funded by the general fund. So that's a, that's a cost savings perhaps to you. The contracts help us obviously collect child support. We collected $83 million in the last federal fiscal year. Despite the pandemic, we only collected about $3 million less than we normally do. And worth noting, during the pandemic, when people lost their jobs and things like that, we were able to work with them to lower their order or do things along those lines. So I'm done talking. Michael's going to tell you about, about the specifics. Then Lisa will tell you about how she comes to the, to the dollar amount for the contracts. And then we'll all be available to answer questions. So chances are, I'll be talking then again. So, Michael?
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioner, for the second week in a row. Feel special. Been here twice in two weeks, so this is great. Can you guys see the screen? I'm trying to share the screen. Okay, good, good. So as Tim mentioned, these contracts are really key components to our ability to collect, administer the child support program here in Hamilton County. These are not a lot different than what you would find in other counties throughout the state in terms of the relationships and contractual agreements that local child support enforcement agencies have with other county entities in order to administer the child support programs. Tim mentioned, these are dollars that are reimbursed at 66% through the federal government through Social Security Act 4D. Back in 1975, really instituted and required all states have a child support enforcement agency to collect child support. So that is where the authority comes from for, for these contracts. The first contract, we know that Thursday, I think you have two contracts in front of you, prosecutor's contract, and then also the Court of Domestic Relations contract are coming up for a vote in the meeting Thursday. So we're going to talk about the five contracts that we have here in Hamilton County. I'll go over those with you and kind of just give you a brief overview of what they pay for and why they're in place. And we do these annually, is that right, Lisa? I think these are all year-long contracts, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Michael, they're on an annual basis.
So we do these every year. First contract we have is Hamilton County Prosecutor. And the cost of that contract is to cover referrals that we make for criminal non-support. So essentially, what that means is that once we've undertaken all of our administrative authority to prompt collection of a child support case, these are individuals who typically have not paid or met their child support obligations over a two-year period for 18 months of those two years. There's been no payment whatsoever. And we have the ability to refer that to the prosecutor for criminal prosecution. And so that contract covers the cost of the work associated with the grand jury and the trial and those things associated with a criminal non-support finding. Those are smaller in number, again, because the goal obviously is to encourage and to prompt payment to meet the court order child support obligation. So although we have some of those, the magistrates and the judges really try to encourage us to do everything we can administratively before it gets to that point. The second contract, and our largest contract through CSEA, is with Juvenile Court. This contract is used to cover all of the costs associated with referrals that we make for children born out of wedlock. So any child in Hamilton County born out of wedlock that we receive an application for services for, this covers the cost associated with us making referrals for the establishment of court order, establishment of child support orders, as well as location, modification of orders, closing of orders, all of the work associated with a case in child support that would involve Hamilton County Juvenile Court. We make those recommendations and referrals to court. The other important thing to point out is that in our county, all of our recommendations are turned into court orders. They don't just stop at administrative orders. Every administrative order that we create is referred to county courthouse, juvenile court, and that in turn is turned into a court entry that we then enforce on the back end. The third contract is through Court of Domestic Relations, same exact scenario. The only exception is those are referrals that we get from divorces. So that as families go through divorce, they're ordered to pay child support or spousal support as well. We do enforce some spousal support orders. We've received those referrals from the Court of Domestic Relations to set up and establish and enforce child support orders that come as a result of divorces. The fourth contract is through the clerk of courts. That is simply the work associated with all of the filings that happen for a child support case. So anytime they touch a case that needs to be filed in the clerk of courts that involves child support, we pay them a contracted rate in order to handle that work as well. And then finally, we have a contract with the sheriff that covers the cost of work associated with picking individuals up or failing to appear to address non-payment of child support. That is typically what the warrant involves. It's not really non-payment of child support. It's because they failed to show for a hearing of contempt for child support and they have not appeared. And so a warrant is typically issued at that point in the sheriff's. If they run across an individual who has a warrant for child support that falls into that category, they track and they bill us for the associated costs for those, for those individuals as well. And then the final thing I wanted to just put on this quick update, and Tim already mentioned it, is that we reimburse those contracts with all of our county partners at 100%, even though we get reimbursed 66% on that. So that is, I think, a key thing that you should be aware of that we do. And I think it's a big benefit, obviously, for the county in large and the general fund. And if you have any, and if Laura or Lisa wanted to add anything, certainly go ahead and do that, Laura, if I missed anything.
I did not. But Lisa was going to talk a little bit about how we determine the costs of the services and how we actually make those payments.
And also as well, sorry, Lisa.
Okay.
We monitor these contracts to make sure, and that's a big part of Lisa's job and her staff's job, to monitor the contracts to make sure that the costs that we set at the, at the beginning of the year are adhered to and that we're aware of who's doing what work and that they're not, you know, mixing and all that stuff. But again, I promised to stop talking, but that didn't work.
And that's fine, Tim, because, you know, at the beginning, when I came, that was one of my focuses, to look at the monitoring of those contracts and who was the provider in certain instances. So yeah, that's a good point to make. Sorry, Lisa.
That's okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So to follow up with Michael, every year, these are annual contracts. And every year, each provider submits a detailed budget of how they come up with what it costs to do the 4D, provide the 4D services that we're purchasing. So the budgets include, you know, if there's dedicated staff or even staff that might be partially work in the 4D area. So they include salaries, payroll-related expenses. They could include operational costs such as, you know, office supplies, security, juvenile court has their own security. So we pay for, you know, the security in the 4D courtrooms, file room, staff, you know, some indirect cost for IT staff and HR. So all those things are included in the budget. And we determine how many units we're going to purchase. And that's kind of based on previous years. So a unit is either a court hearing, a court entry, an hour of time, a case filing in the clerk's office. So they'll divide their total cost by what they think they're going to provide for us. And then we come up with a unit rate. And they, that's how they send their invoices in. And then each month, they'll invoice us with an expense report and include backup documentation for the expenses they're billing for. And then those invoices are sent up to the state for approval as well. And then on a yearly basis, we do go onsite. Well, we did go onsite the end of last year. And starting this year, we're doing them remotely due to the pandemic. But we go in and select certain months to review and look at all the backup documentation for all the expenses they submitted, just to be sure that they're allowable cost and accurately billed. And usually, there's not an issue. But so we do that on an annual basis. And then we have to report that to the state as well.
So I think that's a high-level overview. I'm sorry, Madam President, that's a high-level overview of what we do. But if you have questions, we are more than happy to answer them.
Well, I was just going to add a comment that as it relates to this summary, and I know we've seen it in other papers, documents that you've given us. For instance, the first one, Hamilton County Prosecutor, if there could be a number for the contract, the amount for each one on the summary, it would be great. So we could pass it on to whoever might be interested. So if you can just add those numbers on, that would be great. I'll open it up. I didn't know if Laura was going to speak. Did she have anything? No, you don't have anything?
Now, Lisa said it all. I mean, in the monitoring that's done also pairs with the program staff. So any of the numbers, we verify the referred numbers of families that are being served or hearings that are being felt from Mike's staff, Michael's staff.
Okay.
And Madam President, we'll absolutely add those numbers to this. And when the, obviously, when the contract comes, and even on our weekly summary, the dollar amounts are on there right now. But we'll redo this document and put them on there for you.
Right, I was just thinking, for those who may be watching, all those hundreds of thousands of people that are listening to our meeting, they could just immediately look at the numbers. So thank you so much. I will open it up for, I don't know if Vice President Reese is there, if she has any questions?
Yes, I think I am still on.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, I just had a question, Tim, just a basically clarification. The last sentence here says JFS reimbursed these contracts at 100%, although we are reimbursed at 66%. Then you go on to say provisions of these services would likely be funded through the county general fund without these dollars. So you're just basically saying, without these dollars, we would have to totally fund it? Because then you went on to say that even though it's funded at 66%, the rest of it is funded by state? Or is it funded by our general fund dollars?
No, I'm sorry, Madam Vice President, it's a little bit unclear. So the cost, when Lisa works it out with whichever entity it is, they determine what 100% of that cost would be. 66% of that is picked up by federal funds. Then in some counties, the general fund then pays the other 34%. In our county, JFS picks that up either through state match or other local dollars that we might have. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, that does. Because I thought that's what you had said. But then I read this, it made it seem as though we were paying it through the general fund dollars. But that clarifies that. Maybe if we could, you know, if this document were to, you know, be out there to other people, maybe we could clarify that in maybe the last sentence or something.
We will do that and add the numbers and then resubmit it, so that it's part of the record.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Dreehouse?
We have no questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. And we'll look forward to hearing more from JFS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three. And primarily, the reason why I was added on the agenda is just more so as an announcement. When I came in 2019, we were not celebrating Black History Month. So this will be our third celebration. And we, I know we'll be doing it for years and years to come. But the purpose is to let the public know that February 11th, we will be celebrating some honorees for Black History Month. Each office will choose two honorees. And we will read a resolution in honor of all of them. And each department will have a proclamation specifically for their honorees. So just wanted to let the public know, February 1st starts Black History Month. And we will be recognizing those honorees on February 11th. Any additional comments, Vice President Reese?
No, I just wanted to thank you for doing that. And really appreciate that we have so many people in our county who are making a difference, who are history makers, and particularly, Black history makers. So happy to be a part of that. I do have something else that's not about Black History Month.
Okay, let's see if the commissioner.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you said any other comments. I didn't know it was the end or not. Okay.
No, I have no comments related, just looking forward to it.
Okay, thanks. All right. Vice President Reese, you had additional comments before we close?
Yes, thank you, Madam President and Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and Commissioner Dreehouse. I just wanted to just quickly say, I got an email at my office, and I don't, you know, go back and forth, you know, obviously, on Twitter, people have a right, you know, to say what they want to say on their personal thing. But I just got an email by Amanda Steele, who was very concerned about something that was out there, and I just wanted to make sure, she was saying that, you know, her sister is horrified, her sister is transgender, and was concerned about safety in Hamilton County as a transgender. And I just want to reiterate, and I know that this county commission has been one to say, we are for fairness, we are for safety of all people, and I just wanted to just reiterate that to her, that while an individual may have made that statement, that person is obviously elected individually, all of us are. But I didn't wonder, when I got this email, she was concerned about safety, I just want to reiterate that, no matter what your race or your gender or your sexual orientation or your bank account, in Hamilton County, we want safety, fairness, equality for all. And I just wanted to say that, because I got this, and this kind of disturbed me, but I wanted to make sure that she knew that our county commission, which you all have always been about, and I'm about, which is fairness, safety, and a place where everybody can thrive in our county, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. With no further business to come before, Jeff, do you have anything?
Madam President, no, nothing more for today.
Okay, very good. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this staff meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Tomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.